Monday, May 4th, 2015 Richmond City School Board Meeting.
Mr. Thorpe, Mr. President, please respond. Mr. Sternberg?
Here.
Mrs. Brady. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor. Mrs. Harrison-Hodgson. Professor Mr. Coleman. Dr. Jones. Mrs. McNeill. You know, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, um. I think that there is adjustments to the agenda.
I have one adjustment under item 4.03, we are approving the update of the National Student Awards Association Conference.
Say it.
All in favor? I'm in for on yes, please.
She has one extension.
All in favor?
Ah.
I'm opposed in extensions. You can't just go after it so many days. The next one.
I want to ask Dr. Ben to introduce our student.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce Devon Evans. Devon is a valedictorian for the class of 2015, George Smith High School. Devon is a native from Richmond, Virginia, he's a youngest of five children. When he was four years old, he attended Head Start Program located in Richmond called Sacred Heart. At an early point in his life, he noticed that he loved school and grew up with an interest to excel in school and whatever he did. During elementary school, he attended Green Elementary School. Green he placed in the space program for gifted students. He was also in mind games and that program to help him prepare for middle school. At middle school, Devon has been enrolled, was enrolled in Irish classes, and then he noticed at middle school that he was talented in art and music. By the time he was in eighth grade, he took beginning band, and from that start, he began to really, really, really love music. He continued his love of music in high school by playing in the band for all four years. The instrument he first started out was the baritone horn, and then he switched to the trombone. Throughout his years in high school, he says he's had teachers who always were inspirational toward him, that they saw his potential, and he always had. His guidance council encouraged him to become president of the National Arms Society. Also, senior class officer, he was a sergeant at arms. He's a participant in the Health Occupation Students of America Association Organization, where he's been a volunteer, he's been historian of the National Technical Arms Society at Richmond Technical Center, and also the drum major of the marching band. He says, "I know that now is my last year of high school, I'm honored to be the valedictorian of my class." He says, "I hope I've been a role model to my peers and provided some inspiration." Upon graduation, Devon plans to attend VCU to become a pharmacist. Plus, he would like to someday travel the world, impacting people's lives positively. Devon Evans.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any family members here if you don't have one? Just you tonight? Alright, great, great, Dan. Thank you so much. Does anyone here need interpretive services?
If you need an interpreter, por favor, de la mano.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak during the public hearing period? Give individuals two minutes and three minutes for groups.
Good evening. My name is Mary Rushman, and I have been rising eighth grader and rising seventh grader at Elkhart Middle School. My only concern is, um, once you all consolidate the schools, that you do some type of bonding activities for the children. Um, being in different areas of Southside, they need to come together prior to school opening, so that they can have some activities together. Try to get to know each other, because all of them are going to be housed in the same place. That's the only concern I have. Thank you.
Evening, everyone, and board. Uh, my name is Nathan Johnson. Uh, I come before you again introducing myself. I'm originally a native of Atlanta, Georgia. I've been educated for Richmond Public Schools Systems for two years now. I'm directly affected along with the rest of my Thompson family with the merger that we have, uh, and it's a very tough situation. Things have gone pushed hard and there's, on behalf of the staff and students, nothing that we really feel we can do about it. I will just say that take some time to come speak to these students in Richmond, to your constituents, and see exactly what their concerns and issues are going to be. Because after I read some of the essays that I've read from some of my students, I thought I understand what they have to endure day to day without having the proper educational environment due to whether it be community issues, parental issues, or issues as growing up as middle students, middle school students, students. It's mind blowing. Uh, uh, my last point I'll make, I read the questionnaire that we had at Thompson about the merger, uh, that our school board member, Miss Pinky Abseil, and one of the questions was concerning safety. And responded, "We do not see any increased safety issue, so security will be handled as it is." And that broke my heart.
Thirty seconds.
Because I see and I read students were concerned with gang activity and racial discrimination and fighting between students and between teachers. And to see that we only have the one officer that we share with, uh, a humanized high school next door, who may or may not be able to come over and assist students at need, because he's handling an entire high school as that officer. We need security for these students. If we're not going to ask them their concern, we at least need to hold up and protect them. That's our job.
Would like to welcome, if I may join my doctor, Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm not being rude, I just have my remarks on my phone, no problems. Alright, um, I'd like to introduce myself, good evening, my name is Sean Conard. I am a proud graduate of the Richmond Teacher Residency Program, um, a transplant to the beautiful city of Richmond, and I am winding up my first year as a seventh and eighth grade social studies educator at Thompson. Um, I come here tonight not to speak, uh, to speak my mind, not in any form of resentment, but in resignation disappointment, because I'm resigned to the fact that Elkhart will probably merge into Thompson next year, and that my average class size will probably swell to twenty-five students or more. I resign to the fact that this situation will be the status quo for three years, as those in power must again jockey for limited funding. I'm disappointed that a city and a state would allow their schools to deteriorate to the condition that they are a physical danger to students and staff. Um, I'm disappointed that so many of these decisions are made without the input of teachers, parents, and students. But, I come here also tonight to speak my mind out of a sense of duty. Um, the sense of duty that I want to provide nothing but the best for my students. Sense of duty that I have as a social studies teacher, that I can't effectively teach democracy without practicing my civic duties, responsibilities, and freedoms. And I would echo my colleague, Mr. Johnson's invitation, um, to all of you and everyone in this room, uh, who is a political mover and shaker in the education world, um, to come to my classroom to discuss what your job is, how you do it, or why it's so important to the city and state. But I also ask that if you do come, you are willing to explain your decisions.
Thirty seconds.
Political realities and your arguments to my students, that you answer their questions, and that you address their concerns and fears. The only anger I have is that the system that both implicitly and explicitly informs my students that they are not worth as much as students in more affluent districts. And I only hope that the decision makers in this room, uh, are mindful of the role you play and the difference you can all make in our lives. Thank you for your time and attention.
My name is Melissa Gray, I'm with the John B. Carey PTA. We're talking about shuffling around a lot of kids on a whim. Uh, we seem to be doing a lot of things on a whim this past few years. I mean, uh, again, I hear a lot of helplessness on our playground and in the general public that are not being taken care of right now, because we are really putting the needs of a few ahead of the majority of our city. Um, and I want to know, and this is me being like super paranoid, because I would need to know, um, who's benefiting really? Who's benefiting from knocking down buildings? Who's been in fronting from constructing new buildings? And which office exactly, surprise, surprise, the mayor's office is benefiting? He gets what he wants, because the summer before I signed my child up for John B. Carey, someone was measuring the entire lot, which included the parks and recreation, not just our lot. So, we're in a, we're in a position now where this mystery over in our building has brought Tom Prance into the building and saying that in possibly two weeks, a whim decision will be made on, on our children moving, maybe possibly for the last four weeks of school during their oh-so-crucial SOL time. Which I think everyone here knows that I don't care about that, I'm anti-SOL. Um, when they joined, when they measured out that lot, they were not looking at the building, they were measuring the entire lot. So I want to know, um, where the consciousness of the collective is when you can take children and treat them like they're in the pen again and again. These kids deserve a lot better than this. They are not to be bought or sold. And that's the way it looks like to me. That we are just playing with some numbers so that the people that are comfortable can have some more nice things. And when, mark my words, when they plow John B. Carey under.
Thirty seconds.
I'm with the PTA, I have five minutes.
We had three minutes, maybe?
Oh, that was a mystery.
And, excuse me, excuse me, Mrs.
I know, I know, when they plow under.
No, no, I was going to try to help you here. We do have another public information session. This is the hearing on Elkhart, combining Elkhart.
I know, but I like getting one, two cents in wherever I can, because you know, my people feel like they're not being heard. And then, and I'm on the playground, and I'm talking to people in my grocery stores, I'm talking to people in the thrift stores. I'm talking to people on the street, they don't feel heard, and I'll follow you over to City Hall, too, that's fine. But, our teachers were told to keep their mouths shut, they wanted to keep their jobs. And, you know, our building has been targeted again and again, and I think the whole thing is linked up, because someone needs to noogie the mayor's office and get the money that you need, because we all know that the stuff is being spent on the Redskins and brand-new stadiums, and what they want to do with all of this property is just plow it under and have more expensive things going on. And that's not what needs to happen, we don't need more entertainment, we need these children educated, because I'm not going to feel bad when my Randolph kids are robbing the VCU kids. I'm not feeling bad about that.
Would like to welcome, if I may join my Mrs. Taylor, and Mrs. McNeill.
Hey, Adrian. I'm here as a concerned parent of Thompson Middle School. I was at the meeting on last week. May I please state your name? Oh, I apologize. Shontae Williams. And I learned some things. Um, I didn't know that Thompson will be closing. I was aware that Elkhart was going to be closing, but I didn't know both schools were going to close to merge under a new school name. I learned that there was approximately five hundred students that would be leaving Elkhart to transfer over into the new school under Thompson's roof. Um, my concern would be classroom sizes. Currently, I'm aware that my daughter, who's a seventh grader, um, has approximately twenty-five to thirty-two students per class. That's currently. So if you bring in an additional five hundred students over, we're looking at maybe increasing each classroom to forty. Um, I also learned, because I asked the question, what is the cap? Per class, per, per class? And I was told, instead of Virginia, it's thirty-five. Um, so what I would like to know as well, is it thirty-five per teacher? So if the ratio goes over thirty-five, well, is there any proposal that we have two teachers per classroom? Um, it's just a lot of realistic concerns that I have. Uh, would the kids get all the learning that they need? I mean, you, how can a teacher teach a classroom with forty students? I think the classrooms would just be overcrowded. Um, where they're in, I'm not aware of any proposals. Uh, were there any, um, decision-making in over maybe rezonance, and in the kids?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, we have Bushell, um, Lucy Brown, and Thompson that we could, you know, send the kids to, it's, it's three schools. Why was Thompson just chose to be the one school? I just feel like it's going to be overcrowded, it's a lot of concerns, and I need more than two minutes. So.
You need the two, correct, correct.
So I'm just, that's, that's my biggest concern. Um, and I also have a rising sixth grader that will be going next, next year. Um, him leaving fifth grade elementary school, coming over to a middle school, and experiencing forty kids in a classroom, I think that's going to be overwhelming, along with the changes that's been made far as the, the class, the schedule, the bell schedules change. The kids used to go to one, three, five, and seven, and now they're going to each class every day, and I think that's a lot on the students and the teachers. I think having class time every other day was beneficial to the students and the teachers. Teachers can catch up on emails, they have more time reading papers, they have phone calls that they can make. The students, they have more time to study in between going back and forth to the classrooms. And I just think having additional students and then taking away that extra day, I know it was beneficial to my kids, and I'm sure it's other kids that it was beneficial to. As far as a parent, it was as well. We didn't meet, not have had homework every night. I work, I get home, have to cook dinner. I'm sure all of you are aware of those type of duties that parents have. I just, I don't see where it's beneficial. Why changes can't be made at Clark Springs to keep Elkhart there? Was that some type of proposal? I'm just, I'm just concerned of the the classroom size, that's my biggest concern. I have like fifty others, but that's the biggest concern. Thank you.
Would like to welcome, if I may join my Mrs. Warren.
Mr. Coleman, what's the parent's name again, Mr. Coleman?
Hi.
Yes.
Shontae Williams.
Could you step over, Mr. Jeffries, we can get your name, your number for me? Because you've got a lot of misinformation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, my name is Sharita Ellis, I'm a parent of a student at Thompson Middle School. Um, I attended the meeting the other night at Thompson. Um, the paperwork that we were given, the first thing it addressed, it didn't address the actual health issues that were at Elkhart, it actually addressed about becoming partially accredited now that the two schools will be merging. And my concern is that education is not actually a priority. We're just joining these two schools together to get partial accreditation. When are we really going to work to make sure that these kids are earning that accreditation? And also, as Mr. Johnson, Mr. at Thompson, we have, it's hard to get teachers to come to the city schools and let alone maintain them. He's a seventh grade teacher. Those teachers took their time out this semester to have a session with the parents called Saving Our Students. So when we talk about closing the schools and then losing teachers, that's hard, that's very hard. I mean, how many, how many of you all have children that go to Richmond City Schools? Now, would you not be concerned of losing great teachers and overcrowding the classroom if this was happening to your school that your children attend? And, just like the last woman said, why can't they stay at Clark Springs? Is that not an option at all? And we do have three other middle schools in the Southside community. Thank you.
We had set aside that the public hearing will last until six forty-five, that is six thirty-four. So if anyone else, uh, would like to make comments, if there's anyone who's made comments that wants to make additional comments, this is your opportunity.
Hi, my name is Elle Cosby, I'm seventeen, and I'm a junior at John Marshall High School. Um, my concern is today, we were told that it's Nutritional Health Week here in Richmond. And at lunch day, not one, but two of my friends from John Marshall and Thomas Strackerson received mold on our pizza. First off, pizza is not nutritious. I understand that you have to take certain boundaries with our food, but if you're going to make us have nutritional week, please make it nutritious. A few months ago, there's someone also saw a roach in our freshly painted salads. And you all tell us that we can't bring food in because it's the health of some of someone's allergies. Yet having mold and roaches in our food can give us more favorable things than food that we know will benefit us. Now, another concern I had was the school code of conduct. I am an AP student, I've been an AP student since seventh grade. Last, the last two weeks, I was told I couldn't wear a dress, because it would distract males from learning. The dress followed all the guidelines, it was fingertip length, no mud drift was shown, solid colored jacket, everything that you all agree that I should wear as a dress was swallowed. I was put in school suspension for the entire day. I missed my AP English school, English class, my honor system class, and notes from my pre-AP chemistry class because of the very transparent rules because of the dress code. If you're going to give us rules to follow, please make them distinct and that everyone can follow them and not be put down. And, because males can't be respectful enough to not look at my body. I'm a grown girl, and certain things can't be covered. It can't happen necessarily. You know, so guys need to be respectful, because it's, it's not even an explanation, you know, you should just be respected, and I shouldn't be played in, in school suspension because of the rules I follow set along by you all. Please come to the schools and talk to us, and have to better the schools and the classroom sizes and everything else. My school is falling apart as I walk through the halls, cracks in the floor, ceiling tiles falling down around us. You all have all this money, and you're not taking the time out to look at the students and what we need. It doesn't help any of us. And I have not seen no one in my classrooms preparing us for SOL season or AP exam season. All these students are running around yelling in the halls, screaming and everything else, yet no one seems to mind until, uh, okay, the student has something to say about it. So can you please help the high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools to learn better from it?
Thank you all for allowing me to have such a conference. We said another major point that I have as working with Richmond Public Schools. Okay, my name is Nathan Johnson, and I've been an educator for Richmond Public Schools for two years. The most difficult journey that I have taken in my life, and I just recently had a birthday, and I'm blessed to thank you for that. But as I sit here and I stare into the eyes on this battlefield today with my students, the variety and the intelligence, the wit and the skills that our students show have, I wish you could see a penny, a dime, a nickel of what that is, so that you all can understand day to day what I go through and see, and what the other educators go through and see on a day-to-day basis. Uh, I really want to take a stop and pause and congratulate all teachers who have been here and wish you a happy teaching celebration week. Yes, I also have to piggyback to the merger. I know this seems to be a press issue, and I'm not sure what has you all so pressed for this issue, but I really ask that you take the pause, and I stood in to a conference meeting with some of you on the board, and you all talked about us getting out, and as teachers, we have to go out to the community and reach to them, we'll have to go to the community centers. Well, since our meeting at Thompson failed for the majority of both Elkhart and Thompson, and it also failed for our administrative team who gave the presentation to give their answers to the parents who had questions, let's go to the communities before we make the vote about the communities. Let's go to the communities as we request for our teachers, before we change the lives of students that will change their lives today. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Kriana Nomi, and I am a rating specialist at Elizabeth Red Elementary School. Um, I come to speak to you on behalf of elementary school teachers who send their kids off to middle schools. Middle schools similar to the ones that you're talking about joining tonight. And I brought a student with me tonight to speak to you, and she's a very outspoken, um, unique individual. And those are the type of students we want to see enter middle school, they're the type of students we want to see leave middle school. And we only hope that they are in an environment that caters to those unique aspects, and we really want to see middle schoolers thrive. I know you all have very focused efforts at the middle school level right now, so I just urge you to think very carefully about merging these two schools, increasing class sizes, putting more burnout teachers. So if you'll just keep those things in mind, teachers everywhere, we'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Once again, is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight specifically around the consolidation of Elkhart and Thompson Middle Schools? Anyones? Okay, and, uh, this point, we'll take a three-minute recess, and we'll come back to the public information. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all. If you want, if you want something, I'm coming to you with what I'm saying.
Okay, Ms. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, one of the personal privileges. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, it's actually a place on the agenda for me to say this now, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone who attended the Teacher Staff Appreciation Dance on Friday night. It was well-attended. It was a beautiful event. Um, thank the superintendent and his staff members who attended. Um, and I'm not gonna start calling names because I'm sure I will forget, but I want to thank, um, Ms. Lovelace and her team for ensuring that we had a photographer there. Want to thank Mr. Gardner and his team for making sure that we had the teacher, um, and staff pictures prepared and ready for them to see. And I want to thank the board members who could attend the event on Friday night and stayed through the duration. Um, it was just, I, I thank everyone who attended had a marvelous time. Um, and also, Mr. Chairman, you know that the school who had the most attendance will have a cookout in August for me, and I am pleased to say that Fairfield Court Elementary School had the most attendance at the day. But that doesn't mean you get to come to the cookout. No, I'm just teasing with this. So, um, just thank everyone who attended, who took their time out on Friday night to be there. Thank you so very much.
Ms. Clark?
The next item on the agenda is your public information.
Is there anyone who would, uh, like to address the board tonight? Could you please line up to my right? Okay, once again, is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Line up to my right. Okay, at this point, we will give five minutes to groups, three minutes to individuals.
Good evening, School Board Chair Coleman, Vice Chair Larson, Superintendent Bennett, and all other members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Hare and I am the president of the Richmond Education Association. Tonight, I would like to start by publicly thanking Mrs. Shonda Harris Mohammed for the Teacher-Employee Appreciation Dance held on last Friday evening. Thank you for showing so much appreciated, so much needed expressions of appreciation to our staff. Teachers give so much, a boost of confidence when you really need one, extra help when we're having a problem, a welcoming presence when everything else seems out of control. And though we know we can't ever thank them enough, we can take a moment during National Teacher Appreciation Week to share our appreciation for the special educators in our lives. Tonight, I ask you to join NEA, DEA, and RDA, and the National PTA in saying thank you by sharing one of the following ways on social media. During this Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 5th through the 8th, a picture of yourself with your favorite teacher past or present, a picture of your child with his or her teacher, a picture of yourself holding a piece of paper with a simple message saying thank you to a teacher and why you're thanking him or her. Tomorrow, Tuesday, May 5th, is National Teacher Appreciation Day. We are asking, along with DEA and NEA, that you wear something red. We ask that you wear something red to bring attention and promote legislative action on the issues of, one, underfunding. The state is spending sixteen percent less in inflation-adjusted dollars per student than it did in 2009. Overtesting, which often pushed aside in the rush for better standardized test scores are created, and critical thinking skills, and the individual needs of students. Class size, reducing class size in the early grades can reduce achievement gaps by about thirty-eight percent, according to the Brookings Institution. Early childhood education, two-thirds of Virginia's three- and four-year-olds in low-income households are not enrolled in a preschool program. It's time to change the conversation about public education. I would be remiss if I did not also say that after seeing what the city is proposing to give to the school board, it's not enough. It seems that they want to continue to make our jobs even harder than they already are. And it's bad that they did not think enough of the school system to at least give enough money so that our staff can get a 1.7 cost of living adjustment. I was also saddened to see that the 1.7 cost of living adjustment is number nineteen on our priority list. What are we telling our children? What are the messages that we're sending our employees? Our children deserve to have the very best teachers, and can the city of Richmond continue to say that they are a stellar city when they cannot or will not when they will not? Pay their teachers a stellar salary. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have students from Maggie Walker.
Hello, my name is Zachary Jacobs. I'm a senior junior at Maggie Walker.
Hello, I'm Henry Haas. I'm a sophomore at Maggie Walker.
I'm Eddie Lyons. I'm a sophomore at Haas as well.
And we are here to just publicly thank my first work on Maggie Walker. Maggie Walker provides a distinct atmosphere for our Richmond students. It allows us to express ourselves socially and academically, as well as hair, us, college, rigorous persons, and is athletic, will teach, and live in Richmond's high schools.
Um, we're truly fortunate to have such academic rigor in our schools, such as our dual-enrolling classes, our connection with VCU, which is truly one of a kind and really enjoyable, as well as our AP classes and all the language opportunities that we have to take in the classroom every day. It's just truly a gift.
We're thankful for the teachers. They're the best around, uh, and the classes are the best. Uh, it's just a good atmosphere for everyone. Everyone fits in. You can find someone to get along with and the teachers reason you don't do.
I'm just, as a, as a part of our, thanks, we have, yes.
Okay, also at this time, a student needs to slip out. Let's give him another round of applause. Finally, again, for a public comment, public estimation, is there anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
Uh, as previously stated, my name is Nathan Johnson. I'm a two-year educator for Richmond Public Schools and also from Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, I would like for the board to take a consideration. I, I keep mentioning that I'm from Georgia, but one thing that keeps popping that I have to mention, I was the recipient of a Three-Year Hope Scholarship Grant, which granted be three thousand dollars each year as towards a college tuition as long as I went to a Georgia university or a private institution. I was also the product of a son who was a childcare provider, and with this childcare, she was able to expand and strengthen our family through the Georgia Pre-K program, and which was all funded by the Georgia Lottery. So to see how that has been such a blessing to so many people within the state of Georgia, and to see how strong the numbers are played in the state or the Commonwealth of Virginia, I push, I'm not sure, once again, being here only two years, where that really falls in the depths, but I would like to see the school board grab hope to that big board and push and fight for it. But I would like to see the school board grab hope to that big board and push and fight for our students with their funds for education. Because if I see it on the news that the Georgia Lottery is funding our education program and I hear on the radio that the Virginia Lottery is funding our education program, but I feel the emptiness day-to-day that the Virginia Lottery is funding our education program. It's an imbalance. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we are opposing public information. Dr. Fer.
The next item is item 3.02, received for action for the question of Elkhart moving to Clark Springs out of the area. To Thompson.
Dr. Ben.
As chairman and board members, Mr. Krantz will provide some additional information. But I've been asked to bring some closure to some of the information that was shared by colleagues. One is that all, as you know, middle schools, in reference to the traditional courses block schedule, are going back to the schedule that we previously had. But the teachers still have planning the block and traditional. Just because the students see the teacher every other day, it doesn't mean that the teacher's off the day that the students don't see them. So the time change for the teachers is not as dramatic as a parent may think. Class size, I was at that meeting, assumed that the parent was given the state number of 35 students, but we actually staff, try to staff, starting with a 22:1 ratio for our students. With regards to the merger and other options considered, that was done. Mr. Krantz may give more details that you should choose to have on record before you vote. But other schools were looked at. This was the best option for the school within space. Thompson can hold well over 1,000 seats, students, excuse me, in the building. The merger was done because of the issue with the air quality at Elkhart and shutdown as a safety issue. And Elkhart next year went out and broke Clark Springs, so they could not stay there. With regards to teachers, we will merge the teachers to accommodate a staffing model of 22:1 to start with. Now, will we need all of them? Most likely not. And those will then be reassigned to other vacancies within the district through our normal HR process. And those are the notes I took when the comments were being made. Mr. Krantz.
Yes, sir, Dr. Ben and board members. As you may recall, Elkhart, to renovate, Elkhart can bring it back up to its current state through the $9.5 million investment. While that brings it to where it needs to be, when we look at that 10-year projection, Elkhart in three years, enrollment starts to take off. And it accelerates for the next eight, seven to eight years to where we'll be in excess of 800-plus students at Elkhart in a year. Bushall, when we look at options, Bushall today is 606 students and a building that has 800. Over the next 10 years, it grows that it's in excess of 900-plus students. Thompson as a standalone would be flat. Both Elkhart and Thompson are both buildings, with Elkhart being over 75 years old, Thompson being over 50. To renovate Thompson, Elkhart to the equalization state would be a $23 million investment. And that doesn't include the addition. Thompson would be a $27 million investment. The recommendation, if you recall in math, where the growth is going to take place is to, in our district, to the southeast portion. So it takes the James River and just basically comes to the south. This is where our projected enrollment will be and entice our elementary enrollment. The recommendation is that we do, from a pure facility standpoint, merge Elkhart and Thompson with the caveat that a new middle school needs to be built. Because in three years, Thompson will not be large enough to accommodate the merger of Thompson and Elkhart when Elkhart's enrollment starts to take off. But that's true whether Elkhart and Thompson merge or Elkhart stays as a standalone. Clark Springs is a viable option for next year because Elkhart is projected to be flat. However, that school was built for middle school. It doesn't, I mean, elementary, it doesn't contain all of the facilities that we would see in a middle school. That building at Elkhart at Clark Springs has only 20 classrooms. Elkhart went from a 35-classroom building to down to 20 and has made it work. So it would be a strain for a full year to do that. And that was the reason that we made the recommendation from a facility standpoint to move Elkhart and two Thompson and move last a new middle school as part of our building program.
Where the accountability rating, the typical process that VOE articulated to us is that normally the largest school becomes a school of record when you merge two schools. What was uncovered in the conversation is that they're almost the exact same size as the roads. So neither school trumped the other schools in enrollment. Unknowingly, until they reviewed the regulations at the federal level, because your number of school registry number comes from the federal government, the option became to get a total new school or for us to pick a number. With the option of getting a total new school number, it becomes a total new school restart as far as the federal registry. Thus, the accountability process starts over. So the accountability situation was not something that was the reason for doing the merger. It was healthcare quality and other issues. And in fact, this was something that no one had dealt with previously and it was new information that we could get a new assigned number.
Mr. Larson.
I don't mean to be pessimistic, but part of my concern about keeping Elkhart at Clark Springs is also that if we have another failure at one of our schools, then we don't really have a swing school to put them in. Do you have any thoughts on that?
You're correct. And we have, just like the situation at John Kerry today. We have a situation with that odor. As a district, we spent about $100,000 basically trying to find the source of that odor over the last almost year plus, starting from the wrong point here. Since that point in time, we've never detected the odor. We've done things to eliminate potential sources, but at the end of the day, Kerry is an old building. It's a great building. It's in a great location. Great process, but it's an old building, just like a lot of our buildings. They're old. And I think we're seeing some of the issues is the fact we've deferred maintenance for so long that we're starting to encounter problems. Kerry, for example, their mechanical, parts of their mechanical system are from the original. A lot of the piping is from the original. That piping is going to start to deteriorate. And we think it's a combination of just the old age of the building that's causing the intense smell. So you're correct. If we use Clark Springs, it presents a challenge. If we have a school HVAC this morning, we ran for the first time, high temperatures. We have 13 schools, so we got HVAC issues at this point. By 11 o'clock, we were down to two and we brought them all up. Again, and these are the same things we saw last year when I started. Our mechanical systems are, we've deferred, so we run the risk of having a fail. That's what keeps me up at night. But, yes, man, Clark Springs, we need it as kind of our ace in the hole.
Okay, Ms. Epps, Dr. Jones, followed by Ms. Mohammed.
Mr. Krantz, I definitely want to thank you and the other members of the administration that were present on Thursday and shared information with the parents that is simple. One of the parents provided me with an article that was written a little over a year ago entitled "Katie Moon." And their concerns are the things that were pointed out by one of my colleagues in the article about the state of Thompson, that there's, there are water buckets there catching hooves as it comes down the walls, that it was almost so sickening the individual wanted to throw up. Parents want to be assured that those, they aren't walking into those same issues with this building. Can you elaborate a little bit on some of the renovations that have taken place at Thompson today?
I heard that exact thing before we made that recommendation to go to awards. I looked at the prior year's environmental reports that were done, saw issues that were raised in those reports. I saw the recommendations that were made to do some remediation inside the building. We looked at our records and saw that that remediation had taken place. However, we went back and just confirmed ourselves, individually to the environmental company and myself, that it had done. We also ran an environmental test with inside Thompson to see and compare it with the prior numbers were. And we found a building that was healthy today. But because it had taken place and because we didn't peel back everything, so you know, it appears everything's fine. Plus, the test was good. We're going to run the test once a month. Our test consists of a sample of the building, same area we reviewed, so we have a good baseline. And then a visual walkthrough of the entire building, the areas we're not testing, with the emphasis being, do we see anything from an environmental standpoint that's raising a flag to us? That way, we can get proactive instead of reactive. Thompson, Thompson's an old building. Thompson, from a renovation standpoint, needs work. But we have other buildings that are even worse than Thompson, unfortunately. As that recommendation we made, when we discussed south of the river, the elementary and the middle school, as we talked about it with the facility needs report, merging Elkhart and Thompson is, remember, it's not a silver bullet to solve all of our capacity issues. The recommendation is that with that merger, there's also a new middle school being built or being designed with the commitment of the building. If that doesn't happen, then all we've done is kick the issue, can down the road. And it's going to come back. But it's like that elementary school. We have a major situation we'll face this year. And it's going to happen. I wish it wouldn't, but it's going to happen. And the middle school, if our enrollment projections are correct, it's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz, for that information. My question is just more clarity. Am I correct that there are two buses that go from the south side to the board that go to Elkhart right now? Or they go to Thompson?
There's at least two that may be in forever. But you're correct. We have a large student population. And it's going to be between two and three.
And I just wanted to make sure those kids will continue to go to Thompson and not to show.
That's correct. There's nothing, the only thing we're proposing here is the existing Elkhart students. We would set up us busing them to Clark Springs as we're doing today. We would bus them to Thompson Middle School. And because of the distance, obviously, there would be no walk time with that. So we'll have increased transportation, just like we have today with Clark Springs. We think the students will be able to bus slightly less than they are going to Clark Springs because of us going through the town. But they're going, you know, their bus time would be approximately the same amount of time they're going to bus them.
And the reason I asked for my attention, that it was a request made for those kids coming out of the south side to go to Thompson to be able to show. And I just wanted to make sure that that does not affect what's happening.
One, we did not initiate any such discussion. And two, that's never been brought. I've had nobody anywhere ask me that question or had that discussion of any kind.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mohammed.
So, Dr. Ben. Can you explain to the board the difference between being conditionally accredited? Well, before that, with combining the new schools and receiving a new school number, you indicated that their accreditation status will start over if it will be new. Okay, so can you explain to us what it means to be conditionally accredited versus fully accredited? And what, again, and you might have said this, but I don't think everybody is clear on what that process will entail if that option is chosen. So the correct information can be distributed to the community.
There was a FAQ sheet that I forwarded a copy of to each of you all that was given out of the meeting. I will also be sending you.
What was it, FAQ?
FAQ. Because you all were not there, but I just sent you the copy. So I'm going to answer that with what was given to those that attendants. And the question was, there are two types of conditionally accredited schools. Conditionally accredited new is awarded for a one-year period to a new school comprising students who previously attended one or more existing schools to provide the opportunity to evaluate the performance of the students on SOL tests and other statewide assessments. Then you have conditionally accredited reconstituted, which is a school, is awarded to a school that fails to meet full accreditation requirements for four consecutive years and receives remission from the State Board of Education to, excuse me, the Board of Education to reconstitute as an alternative to a memorandum of understanding. A fully accredited school, you have the school that has met all of the standards on the state requirements each year. If you do not, do not meet those standards, it takes at least a three-year process to lose that accreditation rating. So you can get accreditation outright, meaning you met all of them, or you can get it with warning through that three-year process. Warning being if you miss a particular content area, either math, science, social studies, or English, language, arts. Virginia is what is termed nationally as an all-in-one system, meaning that you have to have 75% pass rate in English, 70, 70, 70, and every other area. And then if you're in high school, they throw in graduation. So for example, if a school misses a particular content area, let's say they scored 74% pass rate, in the first three years, you would be accredited with a warning in a particular content area. That example gave the English. If you meet it outright, you're accredited. How'd I do, Jans?
Yes, and conditionally ultimately means you're not fully accredited.
Correct.
You are conditionally accredited because you have shown growth in some areas or you have met some marks in some areas. I don't like to use the word growth, but...
Well, it starts with the premise that you have not, at the end of the third year, you have not been successful in meeting the state standards. Then we have to go through a statement and show them, basically, I'm trying to do a language term, an action plan.
Right.
Of how you're going to improve. And then they will give you what they call conditional, meaning they see progress headed in the right direction or something else that they are feeling comfortable with that you're doing to correct that action to school's performance. And then you have to report on a yearly basis to keep that standard.
And I wasn't at the meeting Thursday, but what I heard earlier was, I mean, for me and educators, somebody was misinformed about how the schools are going to be if and when they merge. So that is why it was important for me that you, that the two of you, explain in detail what that means so the correct pieces of information can be articulated to the communities, to everybody, so we will understand what will happen. This is not something that the superintendent or any of us is making up. We didn't just put it together overnight. There is some layers when you change or you merge, I'm going to use the word merge, two buildings together. So I just, thank you. I wanted to make sure that was articulated the way that should.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Horn, go ahead and make your motion, but also ensure you listen to yourself to be able to help us record, okay?
Mr. Corn, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration.
Mr. Bennet, just repeat that, please.
I move that we accept and approve the recommendation of the administration.
The group second, ready discussion. Okay, this is Tilly.
Okay, I would like to make a friendly amendment to allow parents to opt into some of the vacancies that we have in throughout the district. So in addition to moving Elkhart into the Thompson facility, that we open enrollment and allow parents to choose some of the other locations we have throughout the district.
I guess, first and foremost, I defer the administration, whether it's friendly or not. And second, I think it's an issue if we open enrollment for only some and not all.
This is a special circumstance because these children have already gone through a lot. We have Elkhart students within the Clark Springs building where we have three ELL classes sharing one space within the barely think. We are having all this happen for the use of SOL testing. And I think that, at the very least, coming out of a building that's consumed with mold, we give parents the power and the authority to be able to place their students when we already made it apparently clear, even to the point of losing funding from the city council, that we have seats throughout the district that are empty. And if the Thompson neighborhood is growing such as Mr. France has stated to us in the public over and over again, then if parents are allowed to opt out of that environment, that would slow down the rush and the necessity for having a building sooner than later, a new facility.
Is there a second one? Okay, thank you.
I was only asking because a friendly amendment doesn't require a motion. Is this a motion to amend the original?
My understanding is that it was a motion to amend the original, but there is also a motion under the law towards the city that there is, if there is an amendment put out or a motion being, and it is discussed without a second, it is automatically seconded as well.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the original, on this amendment? Any more discussion on this amendment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Corn.
Mr. Bond?
Just a couple clarifying questions. We were absolutely sure that there was a problem at Elkhart in middle to late December, early January. Is that right, Mr. Grange?
That's correct.
And, who is here? When did open enrollment start?
Enrollment started when the term went over, so beginning of January.
So all of the Elkhart parents, all the Thompson parents, Bushall parents, Henderson parents, Bedford parents, Hill parents, any other, every parent which republic schools received some notification that open enrollment was open and happening in January, January 2nd, 3rd, whenever we came to school.
The information went on to our schools, to principals, and was also posted on our website.
Thank you.
Just to follow up to that very quickly, didn't we also have an extension of the open enrollment program for students with the new program they mentioned, placing that school? So an exception was made to the open enrollment process that would allow Bedford students to have a late process in open enrollment, correct?
There was an extension for Bedford students due to the creation of the arts program because we had some public comments, some public forums, and we wanted to make sure parents were informed. So we did extend the enrollment process, and that was also communicated on VR website for Bedford Middle School only.
Just wanted to just emphasize that a special exception was made to the rules, and that's also to make sure Jeff understood that exceptions were made to the rules.
I think the difference here is we didn't make an exception for students attending Bedford only. We opened it up for all middle school students in the city to be able to apply for Bedford. So the difference is, you know, what we're suggesting, what you're suggesting with that motion is that we open it up for a select group, where when we opened Bedford Open Enrollment Back Up, it was for all middle schoolers to be able to come in.
But I had that exception for the Fox students, for example, with the grandpa...
Okay, at this point, hold on, Miss Tilly, one second. Just wanted to inform colleagues, at this point, as we usually do when there's a heated situation, we begin to talk over the chain. All I'm asking now, please, before you speak, get my attention so we can keep this under control. Miss Tilly.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we do make exceptions when we have extenuating circumstances, and we, as a board, do have that authority to make those exceptions. And when you're talking about students who have gone through, as I explained before, the ordeal that the ordeal that they have gone through in a short period of time, I think that that warrants special exceptions for these students. And again, we do have all of these vacant seats throughout the district, which is causing us to lose funding in several of our school buildings. So I think that that would be an asset to the schools themselves, bring more resources to individual buildings. For example, if we have Henderson Middle School that is under enrollment and we allow parents to go into that facility, then more resources will follow those students through the frequent funding. It won't go to college.
Now, the number, unless you get a new enrollment from outside, you don't get any more money.
But I'm talking about that specific building. If you have more students within that building, then more resources will go to that individual building. And I know that Henderson is in great need of additional resources.
And you'd just be moving money from one school to the other.
And then you will also deal with the class sizes as well. You would have students, when parents came to the microphone and expressed that they had deep concern about larger classroom sizes, and then in certain facilities, the classrooms are much smaller. So they would have that option to not have to deal with overcrowded classrooms. Thank you.
Okay, Miss Epps, I'm sorry, Dr. Jones, follow up, Miss Epps.
My question is, I'm sitting here sharing the dialogue. My question was, are we even able to open enrollment up if we don't do a review? Do we have that capacity as a board to even go there? So as I'm thinking about consideration, it tells me that we have that precedent that I would have to make this aside to clarify that that is even something that is an option.
The way you're probably, the open enrollment process appears you're open as you give them a little pause. So the board has purview to make changes. What you were reminded of last week when this came up was that this entire process would actually impact the entire district, middle school. We're running up against a time schedule now to try to get schedules done. So effectively, this would potentially delay the middle schools completing their scheduled registration process. It's one of the things that was shared with you last week. With regards to, again, the class size, we're going to staff with teachers based on enrollment of the students there. So the idea of overcrowding class size would not be because of the staffing. It would be about the building and the way they set their master schedule. It would be the issue. Because remember, where students go, we're trying to get back to what hasn't been done at secondary level, which is leveling. In fact, we have a meeting this coming Wednesday where we're just doing that and looking at what is the allocation that each school is supposed to have to start with a 22:1 ratio in their schools. With regards to money, right now, unless it's a new student, you don't get any more additional funds. All we do is move money. And the only money that gets moved is the supply money. So it's not like you take the $5,000 from the state and give it to a particular building. That's not how that works. You just get allocation to go to beautiful supplies. So it's just moving from Derek Jones, U Middle School, to Don Coleman Middle School, just a supply portion of dollar value, but not the whole allotment from the state or local resources.
Well, I agree with Dr. Bennet, and it's based on policy. So there are some school divisions that don't have open enrollment policies. So open enrollment is based on the policy from a legal point of view. And from a practical point of view, if you do limit it to a certain group, you could be opening a Pandora's box as far as looking at, you know, why does this segment of the city get to go through an enrollment? Again, as opposed to another segment of the city? Again, you know, whether that is validly, is legally valid argument is something completely different than whether it's going to be challenged just from a practical point of view. So, I mean, somebody could challenge something that may have no validity legally, but that doesn't mean that they won't necessarily challenge it.
Okay, Miss Epps?
Yes, I'd like to make some clarified statements. My colleague from the second, when you mentioned that parents had an opportunity to apply for open enrollment, please consider that while this incident may have happened, the administration or we as a board were aware of it in December. Parents did not know about this until February, at least a week prior to, week or two prior to open enrollment closing. As well, many of the matriculating fifth grade parents hadn't thought about open enrollment. They just assumed that their children would be going to Elkhart. I would ask us that, when we look out in the audience, it would appear that the majority of the parents are not against, or I won't say against, but the majority of the parents are not here saying, "We don't want to go to Thompson." I would ask us to consider on a case-by-case basis if a parent has a reason for not wanting their child to be in Thompson, that we at least consider that. It's my concern, at least one parent brought it to my attention, that her child was having some difficulty with another child who, that child was at Thompson. Now, she wants to know, well, is my child going to be forced to go back into this environment with that child? I would say that, again, probably on a case-by-case basis, it would be very limited such that we wouldn't have to reopen, reopen open enrollment. But I would like for us to at least consider that if it's brought to our attention...
That it does exist already.
That, excuse me?
That it does exist already.
Okay, so...
I mean, if there was an administrative placement to address an issue with this merger would create students coming back, that parent had an issue, and automatically we will review it and not put the two students back together. So they, whatever that parent is to Student Services, they will then go through the normal process and offer them other options. Because that was administrative intervention, that was a solution to a problem. It's a matter, if the parent has a concern, we can review and still do it under current regulations and policies.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we hear this clarification. Again, I don't want any parent to think that this is something that we're forcing on you. The administration has looked at this option, and again, because the majority is not here saying, "That's not what we want to do." In hindsight, they would like to have been brought in on the process a little earlier. But I say all that to say that I would be comfortable voting yes for this merger as the individual who represents the district that is most impacted.
All right, Miss Ores.
I just wanted to go back to the question that I asked Mr. France earlier about the state of our schools. And I just think that this amendment sets a precedent that if we support the amendment and we find ourselves in this situation again, then we would have to continue to fulfill it. And I think that would be very difficult for us to do. I think reopening open enrollment is, for a select group of students, is tough. I think if there's a special situation like Miss Epps just described, then deal with it through the normal administrative process. But that reopening open enrollment, when we have other buildings that are fragile, that there may be other instances of having to shut buildings in the middle of the year, having to move students, I wish our system wasn't like this. I wish our facilities weren't in this state. And part of all of this that we're going through is to try and get it to a better place. So that's the concerns I have about this amendment.
Okay, Miss Tilly, just so you can be aware, this is your third time speaking, and you have one minute and 19 seconds.
Thank you so much. I would like to move my friendly amendment as provided that the students are able to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. And I would love if we could put something on the website to reflect such that we must do that option. Or either communication to the school, just as long as they know that the option is out there. That's what I'm asking for.
Dr. Bennet? We already have a normal protocol outlined for, like, if there's issues that we address and respond to that parents can have. Effectively, putting something special out there actually then creates the perception that we are looking for someone to do something. We respond to the concern as an issue, and of course, we're doing business. So to put something on a website to promote it is encouraging someone to, even in some cases, we do create the problem.
And I completely understand that, but that is not my intent. I'm just asking you to also consider that what you know as board... I'm just asking that you also consider that what you know as board, parents who do not come out to board meetings, or do not access our meetings through the website, are not aware. At the very least, if we can just put some notifications for those parents who are unformed, that have no idea that this is an option. That we can just extend that courtesy to our staff, teachers, parents. That's what I'm asking for. I don't think that's too much. I think it speaks to transparency.
Okay, and to press point to our attention, Ms. Taylor, that that policy is within score, the package that every parent gets at the beginning of school.
You said it's packaged to every parent in the beginning of school?
Yes.
We don't even know what all of our policies are.
Mr. Chairman?
We don't even know what all of our policies are.
Mr. Chairman?
How can we expect our-
Mr. Chairman, I have an impending question.
Looking directly at him, I'm sorry, Chair, just one.
I have an impending question, Mr. Chairman. Okay? Question to close the discussion.
I'm sorry, he said that while I was mid-sentence. And so I think that I should have the courtesy and respect to be able to finish my thought. Thank you, sir.
I also think that we need to, Mr. Chairman, continue to adhere to our policies, which I believe is two bites at the apple speaking, or three minutes, not one.
No, we've done away with that practice. It's three minutes.
Ms. Taylor?
Can I finish my thought, please?
Hold on, Ms. Taylor. Dr. Clark, how much time does Ms. Taylor have? You have four seconds.
We don't even know our policies, so how can we expect parents to know them? So I think that that courtesy is not asking too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is Taylor. Question to close discussion. We're now voting to close discussion. Clerk?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion made.
Mr. Bourne, second.
The vote is on to close the discussion. The motion was made by Mr. Bourne, seconded by Ms. Gray. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman? And the motion on the floor was made by Mr. Sternman, seconded by Ms. Gray, to accept and approve the recommendation of the administration to move the students from-
Mr. Chairman? What's the item that was made that was moved and seconded?
Ms. Taylor?
Ms. Epps? Thank you.
So you're voting on the original motion, which was made by Mr. Sternman? Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion next, Mr. Coleman.
Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is to receive an update under Career and Technical Education Commission.
Good evening, Chairman Coleman, Vice Chairman Larson. My name is Janison Jay Mannion. I am the Administrator of Workforce Development for the City of Richmond, Virginia. And I'm pleased to provide you an update on the work of Career and Technical Education Commission. And these are the recommendations which we made to the school board.
This is not on board? Madam Clerk, this is not on board?
It is on board after it was updated and received. It is item 4.0.
I don't have the courage to- The city council passed an ordinance and a mandate in which the city council was asked to work with Richmond Public Schools, to make recommendations, to create viable continuum of educational options, and to follow pathways, K-312, which is under the Richmond Public Schools, young adults, displaced workers, and those re-attending the workforce. And in that aspect, the council believes that it is best interest of the residents to align Richmond Public Schools with our economic development activities, and to make recommendations to explore options, to impose goals and objectives, and to help align the best career pathways that are aligned with current job availabilities in the region and those which we expect to grow in the region. What I'd like to do today is just kind of condense what the work of many years, and kind of go through the logic which we went through. And so I will step through this rather rapidly, and then I'll open to any questions of how we came to the recommendations on which we are proposing. In this, our goal is to create a viable pathway, which looks at our standard approach with families, networked networks, going through Richmond Public Schools, and then the goal would be that every child will be able to graduate and prepare for jobs that are in the region that provide a reasonable living. Next slide. In that aspect, the essential employment skills, we've worked and met with all our subcommittees, met with employers. And the goals were, for a student to be successful, they have to be able to manage themselves. They have to gain professional skills, they have to be able to work with others. And so when you're creating pathways and continuum, you have to look at these three spheres of competence to ensure that our graduating students have all of these elements and are able to compete when they go out and work with employers. Next slide. One of the aspects that continually arise is a mismatch, or a seeming mismatch, between what industry is saying and what the school is saying. And so what we looked at to match these elements is that business and economic development often speaks about business sectors, and speaking about specifically sectors. Whereas when we're looking at employment and workforce development, it really has to be around job functions and competencies. Because when you have the sectors, say, the medical sector, there is everywhere from brain surgeons down to janitorial working in a medical hospital. And so, whereas if you have a set of competencies, you can go across multiple sectors. For instance, if I have an accounting skill set, I could work in the medical sector, or I could work in the banking sector, or I could work in other sectors. So part of the aspect that we want to do is cross-reference these aspects. Next slide. In our growing success of learners, we want to look at the entire curriculum, the continuum, from the childhood development, and how each stage feeds the next stage. And any break in that section, as you all understand, unlike preschool, if there's not adequate preschool education, it's tough to have adequate elementary and so on and so forth. Next slide. So Richmond Public Schools has the Bridges to Success, which are the career pathways, which I believe Ms. Larson is going to be discussing on these career pathways. And our recommendations are all working in partnership with Richmond Public Schools, with Ms. Smith. And our recommendations are folded into these aspects of pathways. So there's 16 career pathways. Next slide. Now, the Department of Labor outlines jobs and job growth, and looks at economic development under what are called standard occupation codes. The Department of Education is dealing with these career pathways. There wasn't a clear cross-section and a merger of these. So we worked with our Planning District Commission, and we cross-referenced all of the 820 sectors to the career pathways. And then based on those sectors to pathways matched, we then looked at the 525,000 jobs that are currently available in our region. Now, when I say our region, what we looked at is our planning district, which is the City of Richmond and the seven surrounding counties. Because that is the most reasonable, where if you graduate and you stay in this region, you'll be working within the city, or you'll be working within the seven surrounding counties. And so oftentimes, you see data based on the MSA, which is the Metropolitan Statistical Area. And the Metropolitan Statistical Area, the MSA for Richmond extends all the way almost up to Fredericksburg, down into Petersburg, and over into Piedmont, which is a huge region. So we felt it most appropriate to limit it to our planning district, which is Richmond and the seven surrounding counties. In that, we have 525,000 people currently working in all of different jobs and sectors in the region. That's our workforce, is 525,000 in the area. Next slide, please. So when we cross-referenced these, we ranked them by the largest number of employers and the largest growth in our sector. And so the number one largest employer in our region right now, as far as your career pathways, is transportation, logistics, and distribution. There are 85,000 individuals working in the transportation, distribution, and logistics region. It is also seen that in opportunities for employment over the next five and 10 years, transportation, distribution, and logistics has the largest number of opportunities and growth, as well as replacement demand as well. We see this with a lot of the new companies that have been announced. Stone Brewing is going to be building a brewery here. A large part of its success is its distribution logistics. Trandlin Paper, DuPont Paper, all of these other aspects, it's not paper, it's DuPont, excuse me, are geared to these sectors. So what we did is we ranked the sectors, and we looked at growth, and we're looking to make sure that Richmond Public Schools works with the city to align opportunities in education to fill these jobs. Next slide. And so this is just a blown up, so that you can read it easier, of where the jobs are now and in the future. Next slide. We also look at this in our current region. We have more job openings than we have people actively looking for work. And so this is a blessing, in that we have more jobs available. Some regions in the state do not have as many jobs as we have unemployed. But we do have the opportunity that if everyone had the skill set and transportation availability, they would be able to find a job. And so currently, there are 1.5 job openings to every job seeker. Next slide. Here showing a gap between what the individual job seekers have as far as education, and the jobs aligned to that education. So for instance, we see a large number of people who have two-year degrees, but very few jobs available for someone who just has an associate's degree. Whereas there were a lot of elements that fall into the CTE curriculum, vocational technical, traditional trades, that are going unfilled in our region. Next slide. Working with the JLR report, which came out and studied the workforce regions, they recommended that we work to align the elements that work best to create a viable workforce system. K-312 is the primary, and colleges, technical trade schools for post-secondary. And economic development agencies have a large impact on the employment aspects. The Virginia Employment Commission, Workforce Investment Boards, and then our local social services. Next slide. So what the committee worked with, under the leadership of council and Vice Chairman Larson, was strengthening these pathways, so that our first building, K-312, so that economic development will act as the voice of the community and the voice of the employer. Virginia Employment Commission will help align those who are seeking work with the availability of opportunities. And those who fall off the pathway, social services and the Workforce Investment Board help them get back onto the pathway towards a viable job. Next slide. So our recommendations, our four recommendations. Assess the current capacity of capabilities Richmond Public Schools aligned to these job growth, which we are already beginning to work with our CTE team on that. Make recommendations for bolstering programs that have gaps related to labor market information, so to ensure that we have people preparing for the jobs that are available now and the jobs that will grow. Building future program plans and budgets around these recommendations. Also, there were two committees, one which was found by council, one is mandated by law, who made a recommendation, urging those two committees, and then create more opportunities for Richmond Public Schools students to do dual enrollment, to graduate with a high school diploma and with a two-year degree. Next slide. And that completes my formal presentation. I'll move to any questions.
This is Sternman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for great work about this group. I think workforce development is extraordinarily important. And I want to commend you all for working to partner with Richmond Public Schools. I think it's vital. Most kids don't go to college. And we got to make sure that when they're coming out of high school, they are either ready to go to college or ready to go into a career, and this is part of that. I'm familiar with the Community College Workforce Alliance between John Tyler and Reynolds. And I'm wondering how we can have, create partnerships between Reynolds and Richmond Public Schools more quickly? Because I just jumped on the website here. There's an electrical code course certification, tuition $225. Fuel gas code, of course, certification, $75. Plumbing code certification, $225. These are all vitally important aspects of the workforce, tangible opportunities that we can provide to our students that are affordable, and that are local, and that already exist. And so I'm wondering how we can bring this to fruition, this partnership between Richmond Public Schools and Reynolds, or some other entity that can allow our kids to get workforce job-ready certifications from the day they leave our schools to go into the workforce.
That's an excellent point. And what we're working with, Richmond Public Schools has been a very strong partner, working with Workforce Development Arm. We already have adults attending Richmond Public School night schools. And we have ongoing working relationship with Richmond Public Schools to create special programmings that all the, and everything we try to do, we try to get to recognize industry credentials. For instance, we have a creative welding program that is staffed by Richmond Public Schools, but is taught at a local machine shop during the day. And so what we're doing is working with the Richmond Public Schools CTE team, closely with Ms. Smith and her team, to identify those opportunities so that as students go through, with, for instance, we're looking at the Siemens training, which gives you a credential for mechatronics, which is a very good, high-value job. And so in our ongoing discussions of alignment, which we've already started, is to look at these credentialing that goes along with the education. So that students can graduate, if they don't go into college, they can go into a trade school, and they'll get the industry-recognized credential, and become employed. That's what our employers are demanding, and that's what we're working to do to make sure that they are aligned now. And we are working with John Tyler and with CCWA. CCWA teaches our fork truck certification class, our OSHA 10 certification class, and some others.
Ms. Epps?
I just wanted to thank Janison for coming today. And the thing that, the work on the commission, which I sit on as well, that has been really unique, I think, and different is, well, now we have Ms. Smith, who's our Director of CTE for the district. And there's this open, close working relationship. And I'm just happy that that exists. After we hear your presentation, we're going to hear from the district and hear their thoughts on CTE. And I know that the two of you have worked closely together on that. And so we're not receiving one thing over here and one thing over there. And it's all aligned, so that we're moving in the right direction, so we can do exactly the types of things that Mr. Sternman's talking about, and what you're talking about in this presentation, to make sure our students are prepared for the workforce.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. One of the aspects that I found very refreshing is, within the first week that Dr. Ben was here, he called me over to have a meeting with him. And so this has created this environment of working collaboratively. And now I've talked with Mr. Coleman, I've talked with Ms. Larson, I've talked with Ms. Epps. And there's a new, and I've talked with Mr. Bourne many times, and it's great. So as we work on these, I think there's a new field of collaboration. We're also seeing some change in leadership by Workforce Investment Board. And I would encourage all of the school board members to get more involved with our Workforce Investment Board, and making sure that the $4.2 million that comes to our region is aligned, and moving people to the jobs that are available, to help create living wages and help lift people up where they need to be. Thank you for your support and all of your leadership.
Okay, Dr. Ben has a comment?
Mr. Coleman, Ms. Larson actually ended where I was going to answer Mr. Sternman's question. When you see Ms. Smith's presentation, you'll see the work that has been started. And at some point, this Metro and Board will have to- some point, this is metro, the board will have to somewhat bless the concept of pathways or academies, potentially in all of our schools. Then we have an upcoming meeting with the chamber to discuss the business's role in supporting because they came back excited about what they saw in Nashville, which we had actually, her team had been working on behind the scenes, that we want to find out what are they going to buy into. So that combination of where the jobs are, where you say you need it, and what are you willing to contribute to help us build it because in Nashville, there's a heavy support from the business community to put resources and equipment in the schools because we just don't have that type of money, for example.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Now, I'm voting.
The next slide is 4.02, receive an update on the RPS and career pathways. That's it.
That should be, we have PowerPoint for the EM version.
Good evening, Dr. Benford, school board members and all who assist RPS in the success of our students. Again, my name is Barbara Smith. I'm the Career and Technical Education and Adult Education Director. At this time, my team is assisting in handing out some visuals of our presentation. So as I speak, you can kind of look through it because you all will do some, a little bit of scavenger hunt, and I'll explain what each one represents. So I'm kind of picking up where Mr. Jason Mannion left off and that's again, looking at our offerings, our course offerings, and what we offer to our students currently and what the region requests are. And again, it's the same slide, where we are now looking at how do we bridge the success and make sure that STEM is at the core of every career pathway that we establish for our students. So as you notice, our career clusters, which contain many career pathways, those are the ones we will be working on. Again, we have combined some of them together because it just, more than one, such as military science and education training, has a lot of foundational courses and opportunities for the students. Next slide. Again, if you notice on your bags, we have assigned to you a student. And one of our goals in career and technical education is to also to strive to encourage our students to be non-traditional, to go into non-traditional careers. So you may have a male who's a nurse, you may have a female sanitation worker, some may, someone may have a male fashion designer. Again, our goal is also to prepare them for life and to find out the different and many careers that they can go into. So of course, we know that begins in the elementary schools. So we know that elementary students, they come in and the first thing is the notion of when I grew up, I want to become. So how do we begin that culture for them? Again, we begin the school culture by providing that visual. When they walk in the building, the students, the parents, what are they seeing as part of the building? You may notice in your bag that we put a visual. Is it just in the classroom? Is it in the council's office? Is it just in the buildings that the students actually see where we're promoting career awareness? So we have to make sure that that's visual, provide that visual in there. Next, our classroom environment. How are our classroom environments set up? I know, being in education for a while, the elementary teachers in the schools always have nice, cute seat stuff all on the walls, all throughout the schools. How do we then make sure that occurs in the middle and high schools, some of those motivational things in our classroom and in our schools? At the outside of your bag, you'll all notice the AIP. That is again, helping to promote those lesson plan infusion and integration that we anticipate on doing in all of our classes, again, to promote career awareness. Teacher and staff professional learning, you may find in your bag a certificate of a professional development, again, that demonstrate that we are supporting that teachers obtain those professional learning opportunities. Next, our school activities. You may notice that some of you all have some after-school activities and some of it is cut off. That means some of our school activities are very limited in our schools. So how do we then look into that and make sure that all students have that opportunity? Next, school celebrations and events. Maybe those are some of the things that we may have in all of our schools. Again, beginning with the elementary, you'll see some blowers in your bag, but you'll notice that some of you all have some of those things and some of you don't. So if you think about our schools, some of our schools have celebrations and some don't. Some may have professional development going on for our teachers and some may not. So how do we make sure that our bags are full with everything that we need, again, to promote the college and career awareness? Specifically in the elementary, what we're trying to do is do some preliminary career planning for our fifth grades and make sure before they transition to middle school that they have some form of preliminary career planning. Again, that is with assistance of some of the things that we all have in our schools, such as school counselors. So you'll find in your bags that every bag has a school counselor. Okay? Next slide. Middle school. No, no, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm not. In our middle schools specifically, we will have, again, courses where they can obtain high school credit courses. If they're taking those high school credit courses, by the time they get to the high schools, they can actually then take advantage of some of the dual enrollment courses that we're trying to provide. So again, bringing them back to middle school so they can take those high school courses and make sure that their career plan and study is completed as required by video meet as of seventh grade. Again, you'll notice in your bag, you have career coaches, and we do have career coaches in our middle schools. And hopefully with the partnership with Jay Sergeant Reynolds, we'll have career coaches in all the high schools to assist the counselors and the students. In the high schools specifically, is where we want to look at the students who are ready to experience some of those career pathway implementations. So I'm not going through all the slides of the different career pathways, but as you can note, I just went into detail and made some highlights of each career pathway and some proposals and looking at doing some things a little bit different for each career Just wanted to point out, like specifically, we were talking about the Bedford Middle School and the fine arts. Also looking at when they transition and leave Bedford, where do they go? Which high school will provide that same rigor for them once they leave that Bedford Middle School model? Some specifics in our career pathways, such as health and medical science, what better way to promote the rigor in also providing academic courses in the same environment that they're taking some of their health science courses that mainly are taught at the RTC? Again, looking at that transportation and, and I kind of skipped through some, but looking at transportation, logistics, where Mr. Mannion was talking about, even looking at and speaking with the region of even having a regional aviation academy or some form of aviation courses and opportunity for students. So currently, we are going to look into the aerospace technology course to begin that As you go through the slides, each slide, and I'll just go through the headings, curriculum rigor, how do we provide that curriculum rigor? Again, that is through the dedication and working with AIP and making sure that our students are receiving quality courses. Again, looking at the industry certification or credentialing assessments for our students, making sure that every student and every course has an opportunity to take that industry credentialing assessment. Making sure that they're being offered those honors courses, advanced placement, dual enrollment courses, we will continue to support that. The blending learning and online courses. Obviously, some of our students are already engaged in online courses and thus we want to continue to promote that. A very great expense for our students is cooperative education, learning, work-based learning. What better way to actually show them what will happen in the real world is to then provide them with those opportunities. Again, looking at our staff and academic updates, having collaborative lessons, definitely promoting through our professional development, the delivery strategy. So no matter how well we plan and have a lesson planned, how do we deliver it to our students is very important as we begin to undertake project-based learning and problem-solving learning. So this summer for our career and technical education teachers, we will look at some of those delivery strategies to make sure that that is going on in the classroom, they're consistently engaged and want to explore the careers that they're interested in. The next couple of slides talk about college-ready. How do we prepare them to go to college? Again, everyone is on board, so it's not just CTE, but enlisting everyone on board to assist us, such as the career coaches, the counselors, some of our outside mentors. You will see in your bags, some of you all have mentors. So I found out, of course, some of the mentorship programs. I think one, two, that's highlighted is with Dominion and the Carvajins, where we're having people come in and assist our students in understanding what does it mean to be college and career-ready. Definitely the counselors looking into scholarships for our students and assisting us, PSAT, SAT, making sure that that's on board. I know that this year was a really big push to make sure that they register and looking at that. Definitely providing college and career export opportunity for our students so they can see the colleges and see the people in the profession and what does that look like. Next, definitely the connection with post-secondary connection. And once we have those partnerships with post-secondary, not just colleges, but apprenticeship schools, and even the adult education opportunities, we can bring that back to our schools and make sure that our teachers are aware, the schools are aware, so the information can be brought to the students so they can take advantage of it. Lastly, again, career readiness, looking at proposing possibly a senior digital portfolio. What better way to lead RPS with a bag full of everything that you need? Some of you all may notice that you all have some notebooks and pens, that's for your writing skills. Some of you may not have that because some students are leaving here, missing some of that. You may see a flash card, that's for math skills. Some of our students are leaving RPS without any math skills. And so we want to make sure that they're getting those opportunities. Lastly, again, our student focus, I know I mentioned it, but definitely giving some mentorships, some internships, some activities for our students, some summer activities. We are part of that summer school, summer activities where we're providing enrichment, where the students can actually see that they are, you know, opportunities for them in career and technical education. And lastly, some citizenship readiness, if we actually have some celebrations for our students, our CTSOs, if our students are participating in CTSOs, they're infusing what they're learning and actually going to competitions, being part of some leadership activities. You'll see in some of your bags that every high school and middle school have student organizations for our areas. So all students have that opportunity already. Again, the community focus is very important. We are looking at many partnerships in businesses and the organizations. And again, soliciting parents, that's why some of you all have the Barbie dolls that we do have some, that have parent involvement there. And some schools that are missing that parent involvement. So that's representation of that. Some of you all may see pictures of tutoring, some of our schools have tutoring and some schools don't have tutoring. So as you look through your bag, you'll see different things that you have where if you look at the bag over next to you, may not have it. So how do we make sure that all of our students are leaving RPS with everything that they need to be successful? Again, the last, and a couple of ways to do that obviously is to make sure that this is being communicated throughout the schools, in the community, that we come together, that we make sure we promote it at all of our activities that we have in RPS. How do we promote, again, career pathways? It's not just courses, it's the opportunities that we afford to the students for career pathways. Again, I put in Dr. Benford's slide, which I like, on the road to glory, and how do we get there, that's the last slide. Obviously, right before that slide is some bumps in the road that we have to make sure we iron out. And those are just some of the few budget implications that we're looking at to make sure that all those bags that you all have and the ones that the students are leaving with, the skills, that all students have all the skills and opportunities that they need and they are ready for life. Because again, we're preparing them for more years out of school than they are in school. So how do we do, how do we do that? And again, that's by building a better district and everyone assisting them. Are there more questions?
Mr. Board.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
One, first, thank you for the presentation and both you, the staff, Mr. Mannion. Career Tech Ed is something that I think is critical to the overall success of Richmond Public Schools. One of the things that I continue to believe is that our students have, lose a lot of instructional time going to and from their home schools. And so one of the things that I've asked Dr. Benford before is how do we move, or does it make sense to move to a comprehensive tech school like a lot of other states, localities have, where you get the really intensive tech instruction as well as your core subjects so we don't have that lost time for those students?
And I'm not sure about changing the makeup of the school per se, but definitely, I think I mentioned in the technical center where we do have some courses where they're not mobile, such as our automotive welding and HVAC, where we have more room for those courses. So instead of moving the courses, then we would move some academics into that school. So I'm not sure if it's necessarily having to make it a totally comprehensive school, but also putting some of those teachers and some of those core courses into, you know, so the students can access those courses, especially when they can plan and they can integrate a lot of the sciences into some of the career and tech, technical education courses.
Have we done a deep dive to see whether or not that makes sense for us to have a comprehensive technical high school, Career Tech Ed high school?
I haven't been, I mean, we haven't started a discussion.
Okay. Second is, we hear a lot of issues about schedules, students not being able to schedule. Have we started working through those issues as well?
Yes.
Where, I guess the tech doesn't offer the, I can't remember which way it goes, but there's some issue on scheduling for students that doesn't allow them to fully maximize the course offerings at the career tech center.
As far as we know, we redid the course schedule, the selection sheet. So again, only the courses that are very specific to RTC. As far as I know, all students are being with that, there's no criteria that will limit any students. Obviously, there are some that require some criteria. Just like a student going into calculus, they may have to have a prerequisite before they enter a course.
And Dr. Benford, I think I heard you say, I don't know if it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, I forget which way it went, but you said either the tech center should be building their schedule around the comprehensive schools or vice versa, whichever one is the better way to do that. And that's the question I was really asking.
To answer a couple of things. One is to go to your first question. One of the foot-in-the-water conversations was part of the, when we did facilities conversation, was whether or not the board wanted to pursue the option and have the conversation about the tech having a full complement of the core subject areas. But sort of a hybrid, meaning that the kids could still go, who want to take certain pieces of it, but a kid who wanted to be there full-time could actually get their full complement. So that was more so discussed, a little bit of conversation on the facilities plan side, not there yet, starting conversation, and then about the pros and cons of that. With regards to scheduling as part of conversation, Mr. Jeffries is, we're trying to address. Right now, if you look at some of the presentations that we've uncovered, when we look at the finances, our average class size in the secondary level is really low. And for instance, we uncovered this year, and this is where that came out, F Franklin Military, for whatever reason, was doing a 15:1 ratio, which we've been working to change. Well, they also made a comment to us that they had to run double classes, morning and afternoon, to accommodate the tech center schedule. So the conversations have been gone about what is effective model that we're trying to fix our secondaries to make sure that we make our schedule so that it supports our schools rather than the Richmond Tech. our schools, rather than Richmond Tech make its schedule and then our schools have to just fit in. So that is a conversation that's going on now. One of the things I have to be transparent about is, how much can we fix this year versus we're going to have to slowly tweak and phase in?
Mr. Coleman? Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you for the presentation. This is exciting for a lot of us because workforce development and preparing Richmond Public Schools students with the workforce has been a priority for many of us on the school board, and so I want to commend you and Dr. Bennen for helping us bring this to the forefront right now. I'm simple when I look at this and want to find the simplest, most efficient and effective solution. And I wonder, is there a way that we can go sit down with the folks at Reynolds and say, can we collaborate and design a curriculum or a program with an economic impact statement that we can plug into our school system and say, we can get 500 kids a year who can graduate with a certification, 250 kids, or 1,000 kids, or whatever? Can we sit down with them and, because they already have all these programs ready to go, again, on their website, and a lot of them are online, so you don't necessarily have to go anywhere to do it, you could be at the school and take the class online. I think this would be a very valuable use of our resources to prepare students with a tangible thing that employers will really care about, that these kids can go and get a job with after they graduate. So I guess I wonder, is that something that you all would be able to look at in your department and come back to us and say, we've talked to Reynolds and here is a proposed plan on how we can make this happen?
Yes, because currently, we are, and I've been in several meetings with JSR at Reynolds, looking at our dual enrollment, and also they have an early college program where our students can also receive a two-year degree, probably right before they get their high school diploma. So we are sitting down, we're looking at that, we're actually looking at a lot more courses that we'll have as dual enrollment, and where they'll be able to obtain it as early as 10th grade.
And I wonder if we can just even go beyond that, outside the box, and I think dual enrollment, you probably have to test into it and have certain grades and that sort of thing. But I wonder if we can look at it more of an à la carte basis and say, if this child wants to take this HVAC certification class or pick a particular class that has that tangible certification that they can hold in their hand and take to an employer, can we think outside the box, beyond just the dual enrollment or what already exists, and maybe look at that à la carte programming?
Gary Rose, President Rose, is actually part of the Business Surveillance Council that we started. Some of those have really been in conversations that we're having, but he also, as we started that meeting with the Chamber, would end up being one of the key players. For instance, we've talked about the two-by-two models, which is your two, last two years of high school, rose that two, first two years at the community college. Part of what I have to put on the table too is, no matter what, there's a capacity that may play into this. One of the things that challenges our students quite a lot is getting there. So there's just a lot of work from things that we have to work out, but the answer to your question is those conversations start, because we're not maximizing our capacity, just to be transparent with JSR. And part of the conversation is, what do we need to create our own, and what do we need to just partner with them, just move along and help couch out the conversation? Especially some of the things that are expensive, that we really don't want to invest in because we couldn't sustain the cost-wise that they already have, just to make it sense for us to do it.
And I think we have an opportunity to offer Reynolds economies of scale. We can say, we've got 500 kids that can come and take X number of courses, do we get a discount on tuition that way? They've got these things in the can, and a lot of them are online, so we don't have to worry about them traveling to get there, they can be in a computer lab at school. So I'm excited and thank you all for making this a priority, something we've cared about, and there's a light at the end of the tunnel to really bringing this to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sternman. You have two seconds left. All righty, Mr. Board.
How much time do I have, Mr. Chamber?
One minute fifty.
One minute fifty-one seconds. No, I just want to echo sort of what my colleague, Mr. Sternman, said. You know, we see numbers that come out of Richmond, this is why career tech is extremely important to me. It's both personal and professional. My father never went to college, so he was a trade guy, career tech. But we, several years ago, there was a conference of our local Richmond Times Dispatch that sort of looked at the graduating, you know, where the kids that graduated went to college. And the number of Richmond Public School students that went on to college was just about even with one of the high schools in the county, and certainly we'd want to do better on getting kids to college, but oftentimes, I think we lose the students that aren't going to college and they just don't get any technical skills or, so that's really why I think we ought to push to be leaders and innovators in this field, and I know that if we can get it right or get something that is good, this is very, very dear, near and dear to the President of RDA, and so I know she would be a huge advocate and really good person to sort of back says off and talk to. So I just hope that we can continue to lead and build something that's great. How am I doing?
You good. Mr. Laxson?
I have a random question, but it was a parent call that I had today. Somebody, there's a child who is entering as a freshman, but has been homeschooled for two years, however, they would like to be able to access the tech center and to take some of the courses there. And she wasn't sure if that was, if they were allowed to do that, if they could meld the homeschooling with the technical courses, and she said it, from the research that she had done, that the child, because they were only 14, couldn't access the adult education courses.
So the student will be a homeschooled student and not an RPS student?
Mm-hmm.
And I know there's some policies in my laws on, I guess, the amount of time that the students may attend RPS, and then if there may even be a tuition base, if possible, but I know a lot of that goes back to what policies are in place for a non-RPS student to attend any of our schools, even technical center.
Does, I wonder if this would fall into sort of that table?
Yeah, that's what it mainly think of. And I guess, so, we can follow up on the individual question, but the bigger, the bigger thing is, for me, I guess, is, you know, as we talk about blended learning and online access and all of these things, is there a way to capture some of those children that aren't enrolled in our system, but may want to have this type of education and offer something that makes sense and allows them to partially access their education remotely and, you know, come in and take these courses, because that could help our overall enrollment numbers too.
And we do. I'm actually working with a couple of companies that actually offer a lot of career and technical education online, that we can offer as a standalone, or we could actually blend it into the class with the teachers or facility. So the offerings are there, it's just then to look at that student and how we, you know, have that student take that course.
Okay, Leo had stepped away, so I just want to, we would like for you to check on our policy around non-enrolled students being able to take classes. You do have, Mr. Coleman, from me looking at it briefly recently for another purpose as I'm not knowing this particular case, I think you do have a provision if someone wants to pay tuition, because if they're not enrolled in our district, there is a language, and I can't remember exactly what it said, but there was something in there where they could actually pay to actually take it out, but whether the board has ever worked out what that looks like, I haven't seen anything, so we would have to visit that if that's policy's still there. Turn and bring us something on that in the future.
That's fine. My reckoning is much like Dr. Bennen's, I believe, that there is something, but it may be a tuition base, and that because it doesn't specify, it's just any student who lives out of the district who has to.
Yeah, I think we just need to be very specific about this question. I think she, Ms. Larson, was talking about homeschooled students, so I suspect that homeschooled being, they live in the city enrichment, so they live in our district.
Yeah, they're city residents.
I don't know about that tuition policy.
Yeah, I do think our tuition policy speaks to people outside of the city.
It does, if I remember correctly. So the specific question was, the homeschooled students?
Homeschooled students who is a city resident.
Oh, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation, all right. It's good you have colleagues who enjoy your presentation. Okay, ma'am.
The next item is 4.03, receiving update from conferences, inner-city visit.
I do not know PowerPoint. I do have a written summary that I can circulate after the meeting. I'm, oh.
No, it's not on Word docs.
I went to the inner-city visit to Nashville through the Chamber this year, and Dr. Bennen was there as well. It was, it was a great trip. About 115 leaders from the Richmond area went on this trip. It was the first time since I've been on the board that anybody from the school board had been on this trip. They had an education track, and a lot of what we just heard about with the CTA work was what was the focus of this Nashville Public Schools presentation. They have a program called the Nashville Academies, and they have these really unique relationships with the business community, and they offer the academies in their high schools. They have 41 academies that serve 20,000 high school students, and they have more than 260 business partners that are involved in this program. Dr. Bennen and I are going to have a debriefing meeting in the Chamber to talk about it some more, and all of this is aligned with the work of the Commission, it's aligned with the work that Ms. Smith is doing, and it was great to see this presentation from Nashville, because I think it validated a lot of the direction that we were already headed in, but it helped expose other people in Richmond to, to what the end game could look like. And I think it also gave the, the business community and the folks at the Chamber a little more of a tangible example of how businesses can partner with schools and what those results look like. We heard a presentation from Nissan, and they go on the schools, and the students are given projects to help design cars, and Nissan actually uses some of these designs in their cars. It's a really unique, meaningful partnership. We also had an opportunity to meet with the Teach for America representative, and she's, I guess, the regional representative, and everybody knows that the Teach for America is not going to be able to send representatives to Richmond next fall, so we talked with her a little bit about other ways to partner with Teach for America and to access their talent pool for leadership positions for teachers that would be allowed to, to work here under the certification that they currently have. And that was a really positive conversation. The woman we met with, her name's Elisa Kim, and she also sits on the school board in Nashville. So after we, yes, she's the vice chair, she's me, in Nashville. So she, after we talked about Teach for America, we talked about Nashville Education, the school board, we talked about the relationship they have with their 40-person council. Yes, it's no joke. Yes, and the, and the relationship with the mayor, and a little bit about the politics and the way the money flows and everything. There is incredible support for the public school system down there. Funding is not an issue, and they're, there's, even though they're a regional area, which makes them different from us, they are structured in the same way in that the school board does not have the taxing authority, they have to go to the council and the mayor. And the council and the mayor have just made a conscious, public decision to invest in their, in their public schools, and we heard that over and over again on this trip. Let me see, what else do I have? Yeah, it was a very positive trip. I would encourage my fellow school board members to consider it for next year. I think next year's San Diego. And the last thing I'll say about the trip is, you know, these, this were all the meetings and the formal presentations we had, but we, both of us, spent a lot of time networking, you know, because we're on this track, sort of the education people, I think, work together a lot, and it was really positive to meet with people, grab them for 30 minutes, talk to them about what we were doing, to build those relationships. That time is, to quantify that time is, it was, it was great, and it would be hard to get that kind of time and access being here in Richmond. It would take a lot of planning to meet with all of those people and to squeeze it all into three days. It was, it was definitely worth it. Dr. Bennen, what would you like to say about the trip?
Everything you said, and then the CTE Career Academies was a multi-year process. In fact, I think someone said it took them almost 10 years to get, to be able to where it is. The conversation with regards to their governance structure, well, either 40 member, one of the questions from the audience was, how do you get those people to work together to support? And they said, I can just focus on governance and policy and not try to get into management from, into the school system's management process. The mayor, previous mayor, was a keynote speaker who went on to be governor, and one of his comments was that, when they started, their direction to change their investment in public education was when they finally decided, they said, just putting more police officers on the street was not the answer. He said that to the large audience, that that wasn't going to solve their problems. So they really, while they were still supporting public safety and looking for economic development, they decided that education actually served all, both of those areas to change the dynamics of Nashville metro area. And the vice chair of the board, she switched hats and spoke from that point of view, was honest, she said they're having some challenges on them, where in fact, they're going through a superintendent search now, just registered stepping down. But from the independent funding system standpoint, their investment in construction and general fund has been unprecedented with their succession of support from the council and mayor. Okay, thank you all.
I can add one thing to the Nashville visit, just to update you. I'm very positive, again, Jameson Mannion, because of our trip, we now have Dominion Power, Von Secours, Genworth, and other companies that are joining the Workforce Investment Board, and they have not been part of this for years. So it was very So it's very positive, just echoing what's happened and give you a very positive update that's happened this week, that we see our major companies coming together and joining to talk about workforce.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. All right, Madam clerk?
The next item is 4.04, receive a recommendation for school board meeting dates and times.
Colleagues, we had a request on this from one of our colleagues who had a formal engagement that he had to leave for, Dr. Jones. He has consulted with Dr. Bennett, and I guess we could receive a presentation tonight. His preference was that we move it to the next board meeting because he wouldn't want to be involved in this discussion.
Any motions?
There was, excuse me, there was, there was, this was, as we see it on the agenda, tonight was to just receive recommendations, not to vote on a meeting. Yes, Ms. Martin?
Well then, is it possible for us to, if we have not reviewed the request in the Word document, that we do so and address any questions to the superintendent, the DAU?
Yes, that's, that's what we're...
That would be my suggestion.
We have it in our, it's on Word docs.
Because it's in Word docs, we can review it, we can read it. It's the explanations, and he provided several examples where, you know, and we can just move the discussion, recommendation, all of that to the next meeting. It should be very quick if we all agree on what. That's my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, I was hearing a request, and I told him we did not create any problem to be moved.
As long as it doesn't create a shift, a spiral downward.
Okay, colleagues? Would you all just allow it to be presented?
Can I suggest we move it to a meeting in the future so Dr. Jones can be here to hear the presentation?
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I don't know where you got that idea anyway.
Great idea, Matt.
That was really...
Okay, I got that for my evidence training.
Madam clerk?
God, for the clarity.
Madam clerk?
See, this is why we need governance training, Mr. Chairman.
Madam clerk, please help us.
The next item is 6.01, receive for action requests to allocate CIP funds to five comprehensive schools and eight middle schools to address athletic needs.
As you may recall, we issued as part of the union opening, a purchase order that would be reimbursed by the city. The city has paid us back on that's about $818,000. The recommendation is use a portion of those CIP funds to fund our athletics and the five comprehensive high schools plus the eight middle schools. These funds would be used for athletic related facilities, not for uniformed things that would have a useful life or at least five years.
Is this... This is the form, I'm sorry, this is the Mahomet area.
Mr. Coleman, I just want to remind you, there is someone to your...
I'm sorry.
Did you say $18,000?
No, man. $50,000 to five comprehensive schools and $25,000 each of middle schools.
What does, you said the city said they agreed to that?
The city had, we had gone ahead and issued a PLO to pay part of the technology that figured out since we've been reimbursed by the city.
We had to.
We have been reimbursed by the city. So we're asking to use a portion of that CIP fund.
Mr. Coleman?
Just a clarifying question. You said it's the same amount of money per school. This is not part of the replenishment plan that we agreed to band in athletics? Okay.
No, because of the current allocation we got, we're going to lose that ability to do that.
I move we approve the recommendation of administration to allocate the CIP funds consistent with their recommendation.
Second.
Good, Madam clerk?
Motion is made by Mr. Coleman, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mahoney, to allocate CIP funds to five comprehensive high schools and eight middle schools to address athletic needs. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
The next item is 6.02, receive for action budget transfers. Good evening. There are two transfers for your approval this evening. One relates to janitorial supplies. Any others to copy your contract and services? You have questions?
Good.
A move that we approve the budget transfers as stated.
Oh, the second, Madam clerk?
Motion is made by Ms. Gray, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mahoney, to approve budget transfers. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. White? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion is 6.0. The next item is 6.03, receive for action resource actions.
Good evening. I bring before you tonight the human resources actions for approval, which include the nomination of six employees, the change of contract to four employees. HR actions for information include the resignation of five employees, the retirement of 15 employees, the furlough of one employee, and the change of name of one employee. And also items that came in late this afternoon have been placed on an addendum. There's an additional resignation as well as the appointment of, for individuals to principal positions.
Move that we accept and adopt the HR actions.
Second.
Oh, then second.
Are we going to close?
We don't want to close until we have what I have been discussing close.
Just not good job to leave it. If you sit down, we'll discuss it. Let's do this.
Okay.
Be a gentleman.
I don't know the answers to Dr. Jones's email questions.
Okay, so we'll clarify that in the closing.
Okay.
Because we do have personnel close items.
Yes. Right. And then also, I just wanted to give you all a quick update regarding the staffing with regards to the MLK reconstitution to let you know where we are right now. Basically, with social studies, there were six FTEs, and we filled all six of those FTEs currently. There were six FTEs in science, and we filled four of those, so we have two more to go. There were seven math FTEs, we filled three. We have four more to go. And there were six FTEs in English, and we filled two, and we have four more to go there. And with exceptional education, there were 26 FTEs, we filled 17 so far, so we have nine more to go. So within this MLK reconstitution process, we have filled 32 positions since February for MLK, and we have 19 more positions before the school is fully staffed. And the selections are all licensed teachers.
Ms. Mohammed?
You have 19 more to go.
Yes.
For them to be fully staffed.
In the areas that will be constituted.
Just mentioned.
Yes.
And I couldn't hear the last that we said.
And I said...
Fully licensed.
Yes, all of these are endorsed and fully licensed in their content areas.
Good, thank you. See the closed session?
If we don't, if no one else has anything to close, I'm, I'm fine. We did a whole...
Madam clerk?
The next item is 6.04, receive for action school board travel and district activity requests, we do have three. Mrs. Harris Mahoney was requesting to attend the VSBA Superintendent's Evaluation Conference at Charlottesville, July 15. The estimated cost is $226.83. Mr. Vaughan is requesting reimbursement for sponsored students from the Gilbert Port area to attend a play about Charleston as a villain, and estimated cost of that is $135. And Ms. Gray is asking for amount of reimbursement for a virtual classroom visit to Tappus, Chesapeake, at a cost of $115.68, for a total of $447.33.
Second. 3.2 second.
Motion is made by Mr. Stern, seconded by Mrs. Harris Mahoney, to approve the school board travel and district activity request, Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion is 6.0. Next item is... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The consent agenda is to just approve the Minnesota D.C. 15, 2014, and January 20, 2014. Second.
Pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a1 and 8 and 2 of Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, I move this school board, City of Richmond, convening closed session 2-1, discuss respective candidates for employment, assign an appointment for motion, proposed motion salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this date and Employee Matters 1415-45. Two, to consider the admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic record concerning the Richmond Public School student.
Motion is made by Mr. Ford, seconded by Mr. Stern. Any extensions you went down on the road?
Can you move across the room, please? Thank you very much.